The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grundy.
Here.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mr. Pallack.
Here.
Mrs. Keegan.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. Good evening, everybody. Good evening those here and those at home. It's always awkward. At this time, I'll open the meeting to public comment on agenda items only. Seeing there's nobody for agenda items only, I move to close that session and move on to committee reports. So we had several committees this week, in the last couple of weeks, so we will be hearing from the board members on the outcomes there. So we will start with Keegan. I will let Mr. Grundy give the finance update. Okay? Mr. Marzullo?
I am good. Mr. Powellson speak personnel.
Mr. Pallack, I'm going to let you speak for personnel.
We keep passing the law.
Yes. Or I certainly can do it, but go ahead. Go for it. I'll jump in.
Quick instruction, was a Zoom meeting, and it was a meeting update on progress they've been making on some of the programs that they've been instituting within the district. More importantly, I think, for the public standpoint is that we have asked the curriculum committee and our principals to be president of one of the next couple of public meetings, to give us an update on their building goals and also on where we are, in particular with our district goals. I think, but also, that the parents should take note of, especially at the primary level, is that there will be a new mat series being adopted in the near future for K to four, which the supervisors have done a lot of work on with the staff. And the selection of this series is coming through the collaboration, the work with the supervisors, the staff, and the administration. I'll move on to the personnel aspect.
Sure.
Okay. We also had a personnel meeting, and at that particular meeting, Mr. Dora and Mr. Grosso spoke about some important personnel items, one being that on the agenda, please take note, there will be a replacement for the resignation of the guidance counselor at North End School. I do think that we also, at our meeting, discussed the difficulty that it had securing someone. I was concerned about the length of time at which it took to put someone into this position, but we have somebody that will be approved for this evening. Also, we have some professional development conferences and field trips that our professional staff are very active in. They want to stay current, and they do stay current by getting out there and moving forward with some of the trends that are helping them with our students in the classroom and turnkeying it to our teachers. Another component of our meeting had to do with, take note, there will be approval of a varsity head girls cross coach, and also there were several reasons of absence and there are other routine personnel items that will be presented for approval by the superintendent.
Thank you. Mr. Grundy.
So, Cian and I met with Mike yesterday for a finance committee meeting. Really, the items that we discussed were usual suspects, most of which are on today's agenda, including reviewing the bills list. Cian and I asked multiple questions of Mike, all of which were addressed and answered, I believe, to my satisfaction, I believe, to you also, Cian. Mike also walked us through a preliminary calendar for the preparation and the review of the annual budget. That whole process is a very time-consuming process, so Mike began laying out what that would look like, especially given some of the key milestones and all the work that's involved, so we talked a little bit about that. And then, lastly, we discussed a transportation contract, which is also on the agenda for this evening. It was relatively a quick meeting, but those are the items that we discussed.
Great. Any questions, discussions, anything on any of the committee reports? Okay. In the agenda as well tonight, there's been some minor changes in the committees for the upcoming calendar year, so just to, you know, we all have taken note of that already, but just for the public, there's been some minor changes, but we'll continue to have representation at the school-level FSA, APT meetings, so. Tonight, I want to welcome our student representative, and I did exactly what I said I didn't want to do, is I should have let you go first.
It's okay.
Ms. Gia Del Maro, did I say it right?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome, thank you for coming tonight.
Of course. So, we're primarily just focusing on hitting the ground running for lip sync. So, we just had our Deck the Halls fundraiser, not fundraiser, well, kind of fundraiser, it's like a contest for the grades, like decorate the hall or decorate the doors, and whichever grade won got to pick their theme first for lip sync. And then, that's taking place at the beginning of March, and it's just like a lip sync battle between grades. And then, we're also, we're not really doing a January event or February event, we're just really building up to lip sync because it's a big, like, event for the spring, so we're having penny wars for the grades, and it's basically just, that's more of a fundraiser where you have different jars for each grade, and you want your grade to have the least amount of money, but you're still donating money to each class, and whichever grade has the least amount of money, they get more practice time and more, I think they get to pick their order in the lip sync. And I think that's kind of it. It's mostly just all lip sync focus, we're trying to get that back up.
Great. Excellent. We appreciate that update.
Of course.
And of course, if there's anything that the board can do to support that, please don't hesitate.
I will let you guys know. Thank you.
So, as I always say, you're free to stay or you're free to go.
Okay, thank you. Good luck with the rest of the meeting.
Be careful at the farm.
Thank you, you guys too.
If no one has ever stayed.
I don't take it personally.
I've watched a few of them vocal in years past, like, sections, but.
That's okay. Thank you, Gia.
Thank you very much.
All right. I lost my whole train of thought. All right, so obviously, people at home and people here can see that Superintendent Grosso could not attend the meeting today, so for the, when we get to the superintendent update, Mr. DeVito will be providing. Do you have any update in Superintendent Grosso's absence?
No.
Okay, because he had indicated that if there was anything, he would have.
Yeah, I asked him before, he said he didn't have anything.
Okay. Okay. As far as the board president update, just a couple things. You'll see on the agenda as we move forward, I want to just take a moment to thank my fellow board members that January is National School Board Member Appreciation Month, and I just want to publicly say thank you for all the support and the help and everything that you all do and the time that you give up for our community and our children, and it's really a pleasure to work with all of you, so thank you, and I appreciate that. You'll also see later on in the agenda that we're going to get to, we're going to be passing, hopefully, we're going to be voting on a resolution to approve a contract with school boards that will work with us, in collaboration with us and the community, in overseeing a superintendent search. So, that's later on in the agenda today, and there will be lots of information following today's meeting that we're looking to push out both on our Board of Ed Facebook page as well as the district page that will highlight the upcoming focus groups that will be geared towards the community and requesting input. So, I encourage people to follow our district website, our district website, and we're going to do our best to get it on our Facebook page as well. So, does anybody have anything further you want to add to that? Nope? Okay. So, with that, we will move on to our resolutions. Can I have a motion for G1 through G12, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grundy.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under superintendent report, general administration, can I please have a motion for H1 through H3?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grundy.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under Human Resources, page 11, can I have a motion for I1 through I11?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grundy.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under Special Services, page 17, Ron, can I have a motion for J1?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grundy.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Okay. At this point, will you open the meeting to the public? Perfect timing?
I'm sorry. Did we win? Have we do?
Good. The Board of Ed recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters on community interests. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface your comments by stating your name, address, municipality of residence, group affiliation. Please be mindful of your statement length, keep each statement to a three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. Please direct all statements, questions, or inquiries to the presiding officer. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it's too lengthy, or is abusive, obscene, or maybe defamatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect the privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting.
There's a microphone right there.
Yep. You can do, yeah. Just state your names.
Yes. Lisa Casilli, 12, Dogwood Court. I just wanted to give the board, I typed up a timeline, if you could just pass it, of email correspondence that I participated in since an incident that occurred on October 8th at Panther Park, which I understand, we cannot discuss the specifics of the incident, because as you all well know, I did this job for over 10 years, and I know the law very well, so I'm not going to stand here and dispute or discuss the incident. What is upsetting me is that we are now on day 65 of a HIB that was filed by me on October 11th. I was told that there were complications, mitigating factors, law enforcement had to conclude the case, law enforcement concluded anything involving my son on October 12th, and I have that in writing. So, I understand that HIB investigations may be delayed, as several of mine were delayed, when a student was incarcerated or in treatment, or when the prosecutor's office was investigating. And in the beginning, when the delay occurred, I was rationalizing in my mind, well, maybe there's stuff going on, maybe they're interviewing the other boy about a matter that occurred prior to this incident, which I addressed in my HIB as well, but I have had really zero communication, and I'm not talking about the school, because Mr. Decore and Mr. Chell have been extremely apologetic in saying that it's out of their hands and there's nothing that they can do to investigate it. I understand that it's in the hands of the attorney, and I have an attorney, but what I'm really struggling with is, until I emailed, you'll see on the timeline, I emailed multiple times, over and over and over again, my attorney, Mr. Grosso, everybody under the sun, and got nowhere. Then, my attorney emails, and finally, Mr. Edelstein, I guess, exasperated with my annoying behavior, emails and says, "I want to interview your son tomorrow." That's, to me, victimizing the victim. Like, who does that to a working parent with three children? "We want to interview your son tomorrow." Well, tomorrow didn't work. My son had CCD tomorrow, okay? Saturday morning didn't work. Then, the attorneys are trying to figure out a good time to interview my son at the expense of my son. So, 65 days later, my son should not have to be interviewed about something that the police completely exonerated him of on October 12th. So, lies that were spread all over social media at the expense of my family, at the emotional expense of my son, extreme anxiety, and other things. Why would my son now have to be interviewed tomorrow? Because everybody decided to wake up, and because I pestered everybody one too many times. It just felt terrible. So, obviously, the interview didn't occur, holidays, who's out of the country, who's deathly ill. Finally, I told my attorney, if this goes into 2024, my son is not being interviewed. We are not re-traumatizing my son three, four, or five months after the fact. Nothing happens. I want to provide a written statement instead. Not good enough. I filed a complaint with the Essex County Superintendent, Joe Zara, who happens to be a friend of mine, didn't want to do it, could have done it on day 10, but said, "Let me be patient and reasonable." Patient and reasonable got me nowhere. Mr. Zara gets back to me and tells me that the delay is due to scheduling conflicts on my part, hence the timeline. There's no scheduling conflict. I have medical professionals who will attest that my son will be submitting a written statement, so I'm not even arguing about that, because it is what it is, but what I'm upset about is, if Mr. Grosso would do this to someone who's clearly very well-trained, I'm a paid advocate in other districts, what are they going to do to the average citizen who doesn't know the law and who doesn't understand their rights? All I'm asking for is communication and a reasonable explanation, such as, there's stuff going on with the other party that we can't talk about, but that's what's delaying it. Somehow, the delay landed on me, and that's why I'm here tonight. Is there any way that we can get an answer on that?
I'll give an answer to Mr. Kipnis.
Kipsis? Okay. Mr. Kipsis is waiting on my son's written statement, which I told him he will be getting when I'm done here.
Fine, and you should know, if you don't, that I told him that would be fine.
Oh, I do, I have it. It's in a huge file of printed emails, but I just don't understand, Mr. Edelstein, like, I could accept any cer, I could even accept, hey, guess what, we're not investigating it because it's really just a conflict and a fight that occurred between two boys, no problem. I could accept any solution, any rational explanation, except my scheduling inability to coordinate is the reason why we're on day 65.
Well, look, you know that I can't really talk about it in public, but I have really never said to anyone that your scheduling was the issue.
Well, Mr. Grosso put it in writing. He did.
I'm telling you that I've never said.
Mr. Grosso said it was due to law enforcement not concluding the case, which it was concluded, thank God, the juvenile officer reviewed footage at Panther, and concluded and exonerated my son within 48 hours, but law enforcement did not hold this up. My scheduling did not hold this up. I really can't imagine what could have held this up, 65 days. We have 10 school days to get it done.
You understand I can't discuss.
I do understand, but I think that.
But I want to tell you that I have never took anyone blame, you or your scheduling.
Well, Mr. Grosso did, and I take issue with that, because when I'm talking to Mr. Zara about something that's been deeply affecting our family and other families since October 8th, and then, the rationale that he receives from Mr. Grosso is that it's due to law enforcement not concluding the case and inability to schedule, that wasn't a great answer.
I'll tell you what, I have known Mr. Zara for many, many years.
Me too. He used to be my vice principal.
And I do know that you would file a complaint with him, but I'll give him a call.
Thank you. Because he asked me to reach back out to my attorney. My attorney knows better than anyone how many times, in a file and on that timeline, that only I have pursued this HIB, only other parents have, no one else has said a word about this HIB.
I'll be happy to call you.
Thank you. Very upsetting, to say the least.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Casilli.
Thank you.
Hi. Tatiana Fella, 43, Shiberds Terrace. I'm here tonight to speak with the board as well about a HIB incident which occurred, or an alleged HIB incident that occurred on October 8th at Panther Park, in which my son was involved, and a HIB was brought up against my son, which, similar to Mrs. Casilli's son, the police found that there was nothing existing, and I have yet to receive any, any notification from Mr. Grosso or from the attorney, saying where this is. I am a teacher in Verona, I've taught for 22 years, I'm the peer mediator facilitator, I help with HIB in my school as well, I have experience. Cedar Grove is completely out of compliance, you're well beyond the 10 days that's allotted, and it's unacceptable. Now, at this point, four months passed the time, my son will not be called into a room and interviewed or asked questions about an incident that took place in October while he was standing around after his football game. He didn't do anything wrong, the police found that he didn't do anything wrong, there was video that showed he didn't do anything wrong. The fact that this hadn't been concluded or brought to anybody's attention to say, "Something's wrong with this process," we have procedures on our website that follow state law. I don't understand. Why hasn't, nobody communicated with me, except Mr. Chell, who says it's out of my hands, there's nothing I can do. So, that's why I am here tonight with Mrs. Casilli, because something needs to be done. It's unacceptable, not only as a mother, but as a teacher in a neighboring school district. We all know that this is not okay. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to?
Yeah, I have my presentation.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Before we move to the presentation, is there any, I'm assuming nobody else wants to speak? The decker trip. Yes. I went out of order, but she wasn't here. Yeah.
Oh, you have one?
Yeah, we have it.
Okay. Thank you.
Move out of this way.
That was close.
First of all, I would like to thank the board, first of all, for allowing me to present this proposal for our DECA, New Jersey State DECA Conference Trip. This is the second year that we've had a DECA club at the high school. Last year, we were very successful, for our first year, we had 21 students. This year, we actually doubled in size, we have 42 students, which is phenomenal for a school that is a Group One or R-side school. So, we'll be going down to Atlantic City for the state DECA conference. We went to the districts, and several of our students qualified to go on to states, and then, several of the other students are going to be writing 10-page papers or 20-page papers to present down at the states. If we do well down there, then we can qualify for nationals, but we'll talk about that later when we get there. This is the same agenda as last year when we presented, you can watch this video, I'm not going to show it now to waste any time. We're going to talk about advisors, chaperones, students, accommodations, pricing, transportation, hotel, and the itinerary. So, the proposal is for seeking approval to attend the New Jersey DECA State Conference at Harrah's in Atlantic City, March 4th, 5th, and 6th. Students are competing against other schools in the entire state under their competition events. These are all business events. It's our second year of our club, we have 19 students attending states this year. This is the list as of now. One or two of the students might change, but this is pretty much what is in stone now. So, myself and Mrs. McCarthy, who are the advisors, would be going. We need two chaperones because the DECA guidelines dictate that we need one per 10 chaperones. I put Ms. Ohm, who's a teacher at the high school, Mr. Sweeney, who's a counselor, if Mr. Sweeney cannot go, I listed Will Leonard, who's also a teacher at the school, as an alternate, because the advisors have to work the events, so we have to work the events, that's why we need chaperones there to monitor the students. We have six juniors, and as you can see, sophomores and freshmen. To have that many sophomores and freshmen going to states is a very good sign. This club is really, really growing. We've had several of our students at the club, you were at the club for tonight, right? At the high school? We had a lot of our current students bring their brothers and sisters up to the DECA board, and they're super excited about joining also. So, the accommodations are for two nights at Harrah's in Atlantic City, $55 to $75, depending on how many students in a room. It'll be either three or four students in the room. So, price is calculated based on a number of students, based on what we have raised so far this school year, plus what we have in our budget. So, registration for the DECA conference is $135 a person for each student, and then, based on the balance of the budget for the school year and the cost of what the transportation's going to be, because I think it's going to be about $1,800 for the whole transportation, driving us down and then coming back to get us. So, we're looking roughly, I don't think it's going to be 225 to 275 per student, it's probably closer to about $200 per student, okay? And they're all aware of that. Transportation to and from Cedar Grove, I mean, to Atlantic City, from Cedar Grove, will be leaving at noon, so the students will be at school that Monday morning, and then, after lunch, will be getting on the bus, going down to Atlantic City to check in, we have events at night, and then, the next day are all the events for the competition, and then, we'll be leaving Wednesday morning about 11 o'clock after an award summary, and be back to school before the end of the day, on Wednesday. This is pretty much the itinerary, which kind of I just said. There's several events that are scheduled. We also have several students that won separate and individual awards at districts for highest test score, or being in the top three category for one of their events, but they didn't qualify enough to get to two of states. So, just to recap, Monday, March 4th, we depart for Atlantic City. Tuesday is the day of most of the events in the conference. Wednesday, we have our award summary morning, and then, we return back. Fundraising efforts, raffle tickets, canning at Fresh Grocer, T-shirt sale, and that's pretty much it. Are there any questions? I know it's kind of the same exact mirrored schedule as last year. Any questions?
I know.
Yes, but we're super happy with it, and the kids are excited, social matters, and they're learning, so.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so you know, it's great. I thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Good trip.
Thank you.
Okay. So, announcement of future meetings?